There you go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, when we do the flexing, we physically ask the person to help us introduce the flag to say a little something about themselves. I can add on to whatever you forget.
Hi, everyone. I'm Joan Waters. I'm Joan Waters' wife. We've been married 27 and a half years. We have two kids that graduated from Battleground High School. Samantha Waters graduated a while ago, about five and a half years ago. My son, a year and a half. I'm a flag student for like 31 years. What else?
Thank you. Ms. Becker, will you take a little call for me?
President and Director of District One, Heidi Anderson.
Here.
Vice President and Director of District Four, Venus Nichols.
Present.
Director of District Two, Kennedy.
Present.
Director of District Three, Jim Pegrono.
Present.
Director of District Five, Stephanie.
Here.
On, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. How about agenda approval?
I move we approve the agenda.
So, there's been a motion to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Can you vote? Motion passes by. So, the next item on our agenda is our HSP reports. How you doing?
Pretty good. Glad you.
I know, and I'm kind of chilly, actually.
I think this is on, so I guess I'll just have to talk loud. So, since all the snow days and everything, a lot of things got canceled in the past month. So, there hasn't been too many things happen since I've seen you last, really. We were gonna have a winter dance last month, but that got canceled, obviously. But the DJ was really nice working with us, so we were able to deposit and everything to our Tolo Dance, which will happen in March. So, that was very fortunate that they let us do that, and we're very happy that that's happening. So, right now, we're all starting on cover horse committees. We're just gonna try to make the spirit reach really high, and we'll just get a good school spirit overall going with that. So, hopefully, that works out pretty well. And then, we're gonna culminate that with the Tolo Dance. It's gonna be luau themed, so we're gonna call it Taloha, like a lo-ha. I thought it was pretty cool, so. I think it'll be fun, though. We'll have really cool decorations, and everybody should pick up at a time. We're also practicing for the Easter Battleground event that should happen in a few months here. We're starting, we have all the boys picked, we have our charity picked, so now, we're starting dance practices and getting everything together. All our sporting events have been canceled, obviously, as well, because of the snow days, but those are getting rescheduled. About it. Does anybody have any questions already?
What's the charity for this event? I forgot.
It's the Cerebral Palsy Foundation.
Yeah.
We're helping one, there's one boy named Micah who's going to be kind of representing the whole thing, so that there's like a face for everybody to associate with. But, so, I think it'll be really cool. I'm excited for it.
That's a student?
Yeah. He's friends with one of the girl sisters called Megan.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's nice.
Yeah. Any other questions? Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
See you next month. Okay.
So easy.
Not everything's easy for me.
Well, sometimes it's good to get outside the box.
That's true. Feel underdressed.
Well, you are. No, perfect. And you are?
I am Nea Cook. I'm from San Jose. And I'm the senior vice president.
Very nice. It looks like you're sitting up, but that's okay.
So, we're trying to do another blood drive right now. It'll be in March, probably, but the last one was in November. And so, kind of set that up. They've been calling a lot, because we really need blood, so we're trying to help them as much as we can, because we helped a lot last time, so that was really cool. And then, we did the choice, point drive recently, and that went very well. I actually didn't go to that, but I guess it was a success. And then, the food drive, too. We collected so many things in that box, and that really helped as well. Kind of what we've been trying to figure out for the school, too, is sweatshirts and t-shirts for San Jose, to help out if the kids really want them, for seniors especially. So, we're doing like this class of 2017, and then, having the, you know, I believe, San Jose High School and all that, kind of fun. We're doing possibly pennies for patients, but they've actually been wanting to do like prior meetings, like four, like two months before. So, we're trying to figure out if we can do that still or not, because it's kind of late in the game. And then, yeah, that's about it with all the snow days. It's been kind of crazy, but, any questions?
How do you like the new facility?
I like it. Different. And it's kind of, we're not like walking down stairs and stuff, but, um, I like it a lot.
Have you been at San Jose?
I actually, let's see, last February.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Really new to me, but I like it a lot.
You've been there about a year?
Yeah, just about, but I like it.
So, with the snow days, you probably got like way ahead of your classes, because you had every time, right? Ooh, maybe not so much.
It depends. But actually, I did forget something. But, um, we're doing a tour, so like everyone, public, could come in and just like get the history of San Jose.
Great.
Yeah. That was, that is February 2nd, and we're getting flyers ready, and, they're cool, and we're gonna have like a little theme that we're still trying to figure out yet, but...
Isn't that cool? How's that?
I don't see the light yet.
Maybe?
Yes.
It might look like that.
There we go.
That is going up. So, your theme could be long gone.
There we go.
See?
Actually, they're all in the dark.
They are. They're upstairs, though. Any other questions? Is the tour gonna be evening, daytime?
I believe it is like eleven to like five. It's gonna be like an all-day thing, like an open mouth. Yeah.
Perfect. Rita, are we advertising now?
Yes. Yes, and I was just gonna confirm the time, and I will, yes.
Yeah, that'd be great. Awesome. Thank you for your time. Good job, too, for your first time. You did very well. Next item, we're gonna turn over to Ms. Lynn.
I wanted to publicly recognize a few employees from the business office. Please come on up. Sheena Martin, Megan Hayden, and Sherry Daly.
Like beside you, up here.
Right here. So, these three individuals, I believe, are a first for Battleground School District. They just completed a rigorous program through Washington Association of School Business Officers, and they, this program consisted of having to take School Accounting I and School Accounting II. They took these 60 hours of classes. They took them, they were four hours on Friday evenings, and another six hours on Saturdays. I was very proud of them for taking the initiative to tackle this on their own. Not only did they have 60 hours worth of classes, they also had homework, and then, they had to take finals at the completion of both of these. I'm really, really excited to say that all three of them passed both finals, and they will now be awarded the Washington Association of School Business Officers Certification in School Accounting. And so, it's a first for the district, and to have all three of them go through it together was very exciting, and I'm proud of them.
Thank you.
You're a great customer.
You are.
Thank you.
Go goose. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for Sheena.
Okay, get close.
Like how close?
You're good. Okay, one, two, three. There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on and to Ms. Lynn's financial operations.
Well, we survived the winter storm. I need to give extra kudos to Kevin and Joel, who drove the streets over the weekends and evenings, checking on our schools through the storm. Our biggest damage was at Battleground High School in the band choir area, and Paul Davis' restoration. Kevin was able to get them in, I think it was on a Sunday, Saturday, got them in immediately to start work on that. It's a project that will be ongoing for a little while. We've got the main leak fixed, or, looking at you, are the restrooms repaired now, too?
The restrooms are the only one, and they'll be about two more weeks.
Okay, two more weeks on the restrooms there, in the gym, outside of the gym area, by the ticket area. So, that was our big, biggest issue. We'll be talking a little bit later about moving forward on the, some modular classrooms for the summer. The other thing I wanted to make the board aware of is Megan just recently completed a cost analysis for me. As most of you are aware, the district had, I think we started this about 14, 15 years ago, we bought a used book truck from Clark County. It was a surplus truck, and we assigned a person a halftime position to haul our garbage, because it was a huge savings for us. That truck is now costing us somewhere in the neighborhood of around $10,000 in annual maintenance. We bought that, like I said, surplus from the county. It's also not quite long enough for the length that we're, the width of the dumpsters that we're hauling, and also some of the weight, and so, we're looking at needing to repair that. So, I had Megan do an analysis to determine whether it would be better for us to go back to having our garbage hauled, or replace the truck. Through that analysis, we found that we, even paying for a new truck, we would save over $10,000 a year if we were to buy that truck on a lease purchase. So, I'll put that analysis in a summary format for you, but at the next meeting, I will be bringing forward a request to go out to bid to look at replacing that truck. At the same time, based on the savings at the time, we continued to let Waste Connections pick up our garbage at Pleasant Valley Campus, the KC Campus, Amboy, and Yakville, and we would be able to save an additional $7,800 a year if we were to also start hauling those on our own. The dumpsters that we buy, we're only paying them for what we actually have in them versus paying to have them just weekly, like we went through Waste Connections. And then, on top of that, we do our yard debris hauling with all of our summer maintenance with this. So, I will summarize that and bring back to you a request to go out to bid for a vehicle, and get it done. So, with all the days we've had off, I think that is about all I have for this one.
So, speaking of days off, we'll turn it over to Mr. Ross in the teaching and learning department.
I got one question. The yearly enrollment numbers you put together.
Yes.
What's kind of weird is the kindergarten numbers. It was, the head count was 905 last year, and I'm assuming that's today, right? This same time? And it's only 881 so far this year. You would think that would be a more positive number, more kids in kindergarten, because all-day kindergarten started this year, correct?
But the number of heads, the number of heads didn't increase. It was the FTE that increased.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay. That's a great explanation. Thank you.
Last year, two heads counted as one FTE. This year, one head counts as one FTE.
And that's what I was gonna get to, is, yeah, right, because there was half day, right?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
I've sat through the, an archived hearing of the Senate Ways and Means Committee yesterday, listening to their discussion of capital finance for schools. It contained a lot of information that I thought was very helpful. There were some of the senators who were saying, okay, we've got districts in this state who have never passed upon, they've got buildings that are 100 years old, what are we doing to help them? And again, it was nothing. So, it's also brought up the idea of trying to make it simpler for schools to access funds and to adjust the, I think there will be an adjustment from what I heard, the per student allotment.
The area cost allowance, yes.
So, and a senator from here did question how some of the grants were awarded. So, good, just that, for anyone who's interested in looking into what's going on with capital funding for schools, that's archived on the DWA, DWD, so that you can take a look at it. It's an hour, almost two-hour session, but there was some really good information.
I'll go back and take a look at that, because I have heard that they're looking at adjustments on the area cost allowance, also, I've heard they were looking at adjustments on the square feet allocation, so.
Yep, it's very interesting.
Thank you.
First, Mr. Mizlin? Okay, Mr. Ross.
Okay, I'll try to top the garbage discussion. I'm not sure I can do that. So, I am a little red-faced, because last time I was here, I let the board know that we would not be extending the dates for our second, for first semester, and since that time, we had five canceled school days. So, we had huge requests from our teachers, because it, with the addition of those five days, it wasn't just affecting our middle school, or our high school first semester elective courses, but it was really affecting the ability for our elementary teachers to get in the assessments they needed before they completed their standard space report cards. So, there were huge requests from our teaching staff to extend first semester out of a couple weeks, and we didn't have a lot of time to make that decision. We met real quickly, and we put it on your consent agenda and hoped that's something that you'll approve. But I'm sure it won't be the only time that we come before you this year and ask for a change in the school calendar. Last week, Governor Inslee declared a proclamation that had declared a state of emergency in several counties in the month of January. And what that did was it opened the door for schools to apply for a waiver of student days, less than the 180 student days, and not risk losing state apportionment funds. So, with that, we are looking into applying for a waiver of waiving the student days. There are certain requirements that we have to look at. First, we have to make sure that we have a minimum of 1,027 instructional hours, no matter how many days are waived, or how many snow days we have, we have to meet that minimum standard of instructional hours, so we'll be looking at how to do that. We also are required to take at least three snow days, make up at least three snow days, so we have to look at that within our calendar. We also have to make sure we're attending school past June 14th, which I don't think will be a problem. And then, we have to get, create a plan and get approval from the school board, which we will hopefully have by the next school board meeting, February 6th. And then, we apply to the State Office of Apportionment, OSBI, for the waiver, but we cannot apply for that until about the third, fourth week of March, because they want to make sure everything's done, the snow days are done, so we'll be taking that in March. With that, we're hoping to come, again, come to the board with a plan. It does allow us to waive certain days, so our students could possibly get out shorter, and I won't put out a date yet, but get out shorter than anticipated. We're also looking at our teachers, because our teachers do have contractual obligation to work 180 school days, so we will be working with our teachers association on creating a plan, not only for the student waiver days, but also for our teachers as well. So, that's in the process. We'll be working on that. We have been working on that, and we'll continue to work on that tomorrow with our association. So, Linda, if you had anything else to add on that?
For me, tomorrow. What about classified days?
Classified days? When we can speak to that?
Classified will have the opportunity to fulfill their contractual hours at the end of the year, is what we're thinking. It would be difficult, I mean, most of our, our teaching staff, certificate in staff, have a seven and a half hour day, whereas the classified have many different lengths. So, they will have the opportunity at the end of the year, and they can choose to work that time or take unpaid.
So, we hope to have that planned, and come to you next board meeting. Perfect.
Good evening. Thank you. I want to highlight just a few stories that have been in the local media. We had a story on our superintendent's weeks upcoming retirement, and our future appointee. We also had a story on one of our Prairie High School students who performed during the Citrus Bowl halftime event. And we had a story on our KC students when they won a forestry competition this year. And I also want to make note of a few events that are coming up, and I believe they've been added to your board calendar as well, your events calendar. San Jose High School, as our student mentioned, is having a community tour on February 2nd, and they have it as from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. It's kind of an open house, a drop-in thing where you can come in. Students will be leading tours. The Center for Agriculture Science and Environmental Education, KC, is holding its annual open house from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. on February 16th. We're having an industry fair from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on February 23rd at Battleground High School. And also, enrollment is open for students who live in the district at River Home Link. This is kind of the time of the year when all our ALA programs start opening their enrollment times for next year. And we'll also be having a CTE patron tour on March 3rd from about 8:30 to 1:00 p.m. We'll be going to the two high schools plus KC. So, those are some of our upcoming events.
Is there any questions for Ms. Lynn?
Time was industry fair.
The industry fair is from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and that's at Battleground High School.
That's a great event.
It is. Lots of, yeah, lots of businesses participate, and the community members are invited, and students as well, to learn about different careers in our community.
Last year was exciting, because, Cindy, you added the autobody class, and there were some people from local shops that were very excited about kids learning that art, and it's a good thing.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Next, our monthly agenda is our committee reports. Is there anybody that has anything to report on?
You can report on the audit meeting with the auditor. Congratulations, Mary Beth and the staff, for another perfectly clean audit. It's just amazing to me when you see all of the doctors, everything that goes through that office, and it's all clean, all accounted for, everything's in order, and they can't find anything to criticize, and that's, your staff is fabulous. Congratulations. Genuine.
It's good to hear when we were there in that exit audit meeting on the, what the auditors had to say about our school district, on how, how we're probably one of their, I'd like to say, number one, as far as how the audits come out and that. And again, I would like to thank Mary Beth and her staff for all the good, the good they do to get us that clean audit.
Not only clean, but they commented on how friendly and how easy everyone is to work with, and this is, they love to come to Battleground, because they feel good about it.
And that was three of the people that you recognized.
I know that. Another one back here.
Linda Gallius is back.
Yeah, Linda Gallius. Beautiful one.
Is there any other committee reports?
Venus and I will be up in Olympia for a legislative debate on the 13th of February, and I believe you're going on Saturday, and I'll be going on Sunday and Monday. You're staying the night Monday night?
The day on the hill is on Monday.
On Sunday, yeah, the 13th, so we'll be there before the day on hill, but you're going on Monday.
We'll be back, we'll be back sometime Monday, I think, probably by, what was it, 14?
But we do have a board meeting?
We should be home by the time the long gag is, the long gag.
We have a workshop that starts like noon.
Just kidding. I didn't catch that.
Just kidding.
Thank you, Julie.
We have appointments with eight of our nine local legislators, so we'll be busy on that.
What time's our last one?
Two? 1:15 or 2:00, something like that. I've got it.
And we started 4:30?
No, I think we started...
Did Colleen meet with you about the officiation day, and do you remember what day that was? So, did she get approval from you?
May.
Okay, that...
I don't remember.
May.
She wanted it to be in May, but we're in discussions with her about that.
Okay. So, hold off on announcing.
Any other reports? So, moving on to the upcoming board events, we did hear from Ms. Sanders, and there was a few that were added to our calendar, so make sure you put it in. And I believe that one of the items that was added last week was the jury auction. We'll get, we'll write it in there.
It's also the chamber recognition.
Yeah, chamber recognition, and there, they recognize many different citizens, as well as the coach, and the student in their positions. Yeah, that should be out there. I don't know if it's on the one that got posted, but it is on.
It's on the line.
The one you sent today, right, Julie?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, the busy time of year is gonna start kicking in, and of course, make sure you mark the calendar for graduations. That's just around the corner. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, I think, is citizens' comments, and I believe that Ms. Becker said that there was nobody that was currently signed up. It looks like she's grabbing the mic, because she has something to say.
It looks like she's grabbing the mic, because she has something to say.
Batteries are bad.
So, we're going to move on to, we've got another citizen's comment that's coming up later on, and then we're going to move on to our executive session. We're going to adjourn the executive session for approximately 20 minutes.
Unless you have one question.
Mr. Ross says 15 minutes, and they always go five minutes long, so we're going to go 20 minutes. And it's about personnel, according to HSCW number 42.30.110, Laura Brinji. And we'll see you back in there. Well, thank you all for being patient, we'll resume the meeting. We met there on personnel, and there was no, there's no action that we require some of them.
Point of first order?
Yes, please.
I think it's time that everyone in this room know that one of our own has received a pretty special honor. Mr. Monte Anderson has been appointed to the Board of Directors of Washington State School Directors Association.
Speak.
Thank you. I thought it was busy now. Our next item on our agenda is our consent agenda, and on our consent agenda, we have the approval of our union minutes, our contract ratifications, our personnel report, the student travel, the amendment, number three of the contract, number 1214-09 of the warehouse consumables, furniture, and equipment contract, and a revision of the 2016-17 district calendar. Is there a motion, any questions?
I would like to make a motion, approval of the consent agenda as presented.
So there's a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any comments or questions? I do have a comment. Many of you may know that in the consent agenda, if it is approved, there is a resignation for Ms. Lynn that is on the personnel report. Maybe we could get her to say a few words, but I would like to thank her for years of service, I believe it's been 17 years of service here with the Ballarat School District. And as we heard from Ms. Lynn and Ms. Nicholson and Mr. Pigrera earlier on the audit, and how well the financial department has operated, I think that those are some tremendous jobs that you've done through the years, and I would personally like to thank you for your patience with me as a board member, and the questions that I've had, as we've grown in the last seven years. I know that I am personally missing in the service that you've got. So, I don't know, if there's any other board members that have any comments?
I just want to thank Mary Beth. I have learned a lot about school finance from you. I was very skeptical in the beginning, probably a little confrontational with you, but you're patient with me, and we work together, and I would consider us friends. I wish you the best in your retirement, and thank you for all your time here and the great work you did.
So I think every one of us has sat on the Financial Advisory Committee, and you've educated all of us, and I can't thank you enough for what you do for us, and your explanation is spot-on every time. Thanks, Mary Beth, we're going to be truly missed.
Who am I going to pick on? Mary Beth not only has knowledge of school finance, but she's given me tremendous amount of support, and I think the rest of you should know, she has given a tremendous amount of support for the whole district in her work with the legislators, justifying in front of the legislators, and providing information to the task forces. Mary Beth, there's no way to repay what you've done. Thank you.
I'd also like to thank you, Mary Beth, for what you've taught me, starting with, I guess, Finance 101. And I know at times there, it's kind of been probably questions I've asked, brought to your attention, that hopefully didn't ruffle your feathers too much, you know, you've been here many years, and you've been through it before, but I want to thank you for your patience with me, and wish you the best of luck, and I'm hoping that we can use you at time or due now.
Ms. Nicholson's wondering if Mr. Hoddle, your administrators...
I just carry this on for a little while, making it more uncomfortable.
Where's the wine?
We have a line of people that can come up and talk about Mary Beth. She, I've worked with a number of districts, I can't, haven't been able to hold a job, so I've had the opportunity to work in like seven districts, and I will tell you that she is truly by far the best business manager I have had the privilege to work with. Not only did she have skills and understanding of finance, it comes from, you know, she comes from an auditor's background, so she has an advantage over some school directors, I mean, some business managers, which comes from that background. But her ability to work with people, I think, is unparalleled. She loves people, and people love her, and people work with her to do the work that needs to be done, and it gets done in good fashion, and I will miss you as well, Mary Beth. You're a lot of fun to be with, as well as doing a great job. Thank you for being with us, it's dope to do.
Don't chew either.
You have to now, you're stuck.
Well, I guess I'll speak from the principal side. When I, a lot of us take over buildings as assistant principals or principals, coming up with teaching rights, and our knowledge of school finance is pretty miniscule, except for maybe a class in the process, and so you, for me, and I think for many others, did a wonderful job helping educate us, like everybody else has said, in Finance 101, and helping us know, even though we didn't have a lot of budget, that we learned how to spend it by way. So we thank you for all your years of service.
And I'll just make a real quick comment. My wife met you at the Prairie Auction last year, along with several members of the school board, when I told her, oh, Mary, you know, Mary Beth is going on to greener pasture, she said, that crazy lady? Yeah, that sums her up, I will definitely miss her crazy, dumber spirit.
Yeah, I'm not the only crazy one, your wife also spent 20 bucks on a goldfish. Right. So, thank you so much, I'm going to miss my, I call it my Ballarat command line. I always said when I wasn't having fun, I'd leave, well, I lasted 17 years, and I still have fun, but my husband retired a year and a half ago, and I've trusted him on his own long enough. So, we had no idea that our house would sell in a couple of days when we had 14 inches of snow, and so we're going to be homeless for a few months, and so that was my reason for an early departure. We'll be homeless at my brother's vacation house up at Lake Vancouver for a few months. But I'm leaving you in good hands, between Megan and Linda and all of this support staff, everything will be great, and I plan on not just jumping ship, but I plan on staying, coming back, probably a day a week for a while, just to help with the transition. There's a lot of things that only happen, say, once a year, and one individual has been the one doing them for 17 years, and to try to sit and list all of those things down and remember them is difficult. But I've had the very best superintendent and coworkers as assistant superintendents the last three years, and time to golf, kayak, hike, weed, walk the cats, whatever. I'll miss all of you, thank you.
Still have a motion on the floor, and there's also some exciting stuff on there, so let's, is there any other questions? Okay, hearing no other questions or comments, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Mark Ross?
Thank you. Well, we know we have big shoes to fill for Mary Beth, and we looked worldwide, no, we looked within our, looked within our own department, and realized we have amazing talent there that works in our business and finance department. And so with that, it's my pleasure to announce, starting March 1st, thank you, that our interim director of school finance will be Megan Hayton. Megan's very excited, and we're really excited to have you in that position, and we know Mary Beth will be around to help us out, but we know we're really capable of handling these, so thanks.
Thank you. I want to thank Mark Hoddle, Mark Ross, and Mary Beth and the board for the opportunity. It's going to be hard to have Mary Beth leave, she's been a remarkable financial steward for us, and I've enjoyed working with you for the last three years. I know. I'm really looking forward to it, and working with you more closely, all of you.
Thank you. And with that, too, we have some changes coming up to take effect July 1st of next year, but we wanted to start the transition now, so that Mark has allowed me to do a lot of things to help the transition work smoothly, and I appreciate that, and so we're going to move forward with some hiring of some other positions. And so I wanted to announce, effective July 1st, that we'll have a new executive director of special services, and that'll be Ellen Weisner.
You know what, as I was driving in today, I was thinking back, I started in this district in 1993 as a school psychologist, and I never would have thought, this is where I would have ended, but it's been a privilege to work in this district. I am very passionate about the work that we do, working for students with special needs, and I'm very excited, thank you.
We're excited to have her in that position, which means where the heck's Danny going? So I'm very excited, too, to announce, it's back out the back door. Effective July 1st of next year, our new deputy superintendent for teaching and learning, operations, and finance will be Denny Warren.
I just want to say three things, and number one, I want to thank the board for this opportunity, I promise you, I will not let you down. I'm passionate about this district, you guys have been very good to me, and I really, really am thankful for this opportunity. Secondly, I'd like to thank the four people sitting up here, I've been fortunate in my life to have wonderful mentors, and Mary Beth, and Linda, and Mark, and Mark, I count you among those here, you've given me lots of wisdom, lots of advice, a kick in the pants every now and then when I needed it, and I really, really appreciate everything that you've done for me. And third, and last, I want to say that I assure this district that you're in very good hands with Ellen Weisner as the director, executive director of special services, I've never worked with anybody better, and so I feel, I'm happy for Ellen, and I'm happy that I can leave the department in great hands. Again, thank you very, very much, I am pumped about this.
All right, well, you might not be after we tell you what you're going to do, so... But we're very excited for all three positions, so thanks to the board for making that happen.
We have great things to look forward to in this district. We've come a long ways, and with the path that is being set, we have a great future in front of us, so we're excited to have everybody on board. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. We have the approval for the second reading of Policy number 3115, Ms. Lynn. Good evening.
So this is the second reading for Policy 3116, and this is for students in foster care. This is a new policy that was implemented with the ESSA legislation. So, do you have any, I would request that this be approved, and do you have any questions?
I will move that the board of directors approve the second reading and adoption of Policy 3116, students in foster care.
So we have a, so we have a motion on the floor, any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
We have another policy that's new, put up by OSBI, and it's called the Language Access Plan, and this is making sure that we provide interpretive and translation services to all our parents that are connected to our English language learning. And so it's a brand-new policy, this is a second reading, and I ask for approval.
So, is there a motion to approve the second reading?
I'll make a motion that we approve the second reading of Policy 4218, Language Access Plan.
So there's a motion on the floor, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Now we're going to move on to new business, and under new business, we have the revision of Policy number 2024.
Right, 2024 is online learning, and it has been, we've reviewed it with the River Online team, and we wanted to make some updates to it to match the WASD language for the policy and procedures. In the procedures, we added River Online as the entity for providing online learning, and changed the definition to the, in the procedures, there's a definition for online learning, and we modified that to update it based on WASD's definition, and we used about three other districts, too, to make sure we were all on the same, on the same page. So I'm here to ask for approval to update the policy and procedures for online learning.
So is there any questions?
I assume if it's spread to some other school besides River Home Link, that would be changed.
It would be changed, in the procedures, because on the policy, it doesn't say, yeah, but we would change the procedures.
And for information, the procedure, anytime there's change in procedure, the board should receive notification, but the board is not to approve procedural changes.
I'll move board of directors approve the revision of Policy 2024, online learning as presented.
So there's a motion on the floor, any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Moving forward with Yakult, Ted likes so much, or that, Ms. Lynn?
As we prepare for this next upcoming year, in discussions, it appears that it would help with kind of our reconfiguration of where we need classrooms and where new classrooms should go, so the first step in that would be to look at putting a 10-plex modular up at Yakult Primary, and in doing so, we would move four, two-plex classrooms to Lauren. I wanted to bring this to the board, just to get approval to move forward with starting the whole engineering permitting and contracting. the whole engineering permitting and contracting necessary to order the 10plex for Yakal. We would come back to the board at a later date for actual approval of a contract. But getting this approval this evening allows us to get in line for construction of a modular. The earlier we get in line to get that modular constructed, the sooner we can get it up there and get it installed so we're not working the last day of summer before school starts to get the classrooms done.
Is there any questions for Ms. Lynn?
You know, I've got one here on, so we're taking away basically eight classrooms and add 10. Is this going to create a issue with the seating system at all or is that okay?
I'm going to turn this way to Mr. Dolman. Putting a 10plex up at Yakal will cause any issues with their seating system?
No, no. Thank you. Mr.?
You know, we did the school approval plan and there's a lot of talk about slim schools having even more kids than they anticipated. And just throwing this out there, this is just off the top of my head, is this something we want to look at a little bit further with the anticipation of what we're going to do as possible changes and if there are going to be any changes or are we going to go ahead and pursue this and put additional modulars on a school that is obviously overcrowded? And anticipating we were going to have a bond to pass, we may have to revisit what our plans are for that school.
So in particular, I believe Mr. Root is talking about the next item, which kind of the two mesh. If one happens, then number two happens. And the second part of this would be moving the four, two classroom units to Lauren. As we're aware, we've got to move forward with sewer installation at the Lauren Glenwood campus. And I just want to make you aware on both of these issues, that right now we have a little over 20,000 in impact fees after having put in the two 10plexes this summer. If impact fees come in for the remainder of the year at the rate they did last year, financially, we should be fine with both of these projects, the 10plex and moving the four other modulars. Should impact fees slow down, though, I want to make you aware that you may need to, if you go forward with both projects, you may need to do an inter-fund loan for a short period of time to finalize this at the end of the summer. I just, since I won't be here, I really want you to be aware of that.
So Mr. Root brings up a very good point, but also historically, when I went back and I looked at some of the enrollment numbers, one of the particular schools, Lauren, in 2010, had 650 FD and currently, as of December, February, it was at 622 FD or something like that. So they're not yet at the highest capacity that they have any previously. So again, if we, if we were to move on to the next item, when that does come up, that would alleviate some of the overcrowding issues that could come up there, even though we do have a lot of schools. But I do think it's something that we might, we want to keep our finger on that policy as well.
You know, that school's growing very rapidly. The numbers are increasing daily. I don't know what's happening at Glenwood. I assume about the same thing?
It's about the same thing. And Lauren had, I think they may have had as many as six classrooms that they were using over there at the Glenwood modulars. So that's part of that shift, too, has been as the numbers have gone down and we've added full daycare, Glenwood has taken over some of those classrooms that had been used by Lauren.
Is there any more questions for Ms. Lynn?
I think the idea of this is great because those modulars probably don't have a lot of years left on them up there at Yakal. And we would have to do some replacing up there anyhow. And we do know that we are going to eventually do something down in Lauren and Glenwood and to put something new down there with not knowing where the new schools are going to be situated and that, it only makes sense, I think, to move those Yakal modulars down there. Very wise decision.
And the growth of the Yakal is obviously justifying more classrooms as well.
So with that, I entertain a motion to approve the, with the operations department to move forward with engineering permitting and other contracting necessary to order and install a 10plex modular at Yakal.
I'll make a motion to approve, move forward with the Yakal 10plex modular.
So there's a motion on the floor. Are there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. And then we talked about the next item already, a little bit, Ms. Lynn gave us an update on it, which was the approval of move those modulars from Yakal, the current four classes, down to Glenwood Lauren campus. Do we have any questions for her on that or if not, I entertain a motion for that as well.
I just want to know, what does it cost to move them? I'm curious.
Cost to move a two classroom? We moved them up there. Do you remember what we paid to move them up?
It'll probably be 50 to 60 per.
Yeah, they were. Right up, right up here.
I'll make a motion to approve, move modulars from Yakal to Lauren.
So there's a motion on the floor to approve the moving of the modulars from Yakal to Lauren involving engineers and such as well. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. That's it for new business. Now we move on to the fun part of the agenda and we'll ask Ms. Allen if anybody has signed up on our citizens' comments piece.
Yep.
And there's nobody been signed up, so yes, come on up.
You don't need to sign up.
No, you don't need to sign up. You can just come up and we'll allow you--
Come on in.
Three minutes.
Okay, well, it'll just be really quick.
Thank you. How are you doing this?
I'm good.
Good.
So I just wanted to give you a report on Citizens for Better Schools, on the campaigning efforts for the shared levy pass of February 14. We've had a district-wide letter writing campaign that if they all go out, by my estimates, we'll have 6,100 letters going out to Arcade, through Arcade Schools. We just had a meeting this evening at Battleground High School and we had huge turnout, so that was really awesome to see. We will have some upcoming walk-in nod dates this Saturday and the following two Saturdays that we're getting our schools on board and staff members to walk through the neighborhoods and pass out literature. And then also, we're going to have some sign waving, I think, this coming Monday. Ballot should be arriving, probably starting this Friday, you'll just have to see in your mailboxes. So Monday, we have some designated spots for sign moving and also on Monday, the 13th, to remind those people who have been procrastinators about getting their ballots signed and turned in. So one of the spots will be at the corner right there by Casey, so all of the Casey faculty can go there and stand. Also down by Winco, Main Street, 199th and 503, down by River Home Link and Maple Grove. And then also 72nd and 503, so Dollar's Corner is another spot that we have never stood. And then also 119th and 72nd for a lot of the Pleasant Valley folks to go and wave signs. And then also at my corner, Linda, you can come and join us at Rock Creek Road and Monte, Rock Creek Road and 503. So it's going well, a lot more interest than with the bond. And I'm going to get it now. You're going to win it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the update on that, Ms. Krantle. And on behalf of the board, we'd like to thank the citizens group and everything that you've done to help promote both the bond the last time and the levy now and all the historical work that you've done for us in the past. It's been very much appreciated. Is there anybody else that's wishing to address the board at this time? Time is up. Thank you and have a nice evening.